Um, let me record.
Oh, wait a minute. I gotta do my got it thing. Okay. I'll call the meeting to order at five thirty-two PM for the Wellington School Building Committee Finance Subcommittee. I'm glad I got the agenda through this time. It only took me twice, so I'm getting better. Erica, in the future, is there an easier way to do it? Or is what I'm doing like?
You just need to reach out to Kelsey to get a Zoom link. That's all. You reach out to her to get a Zoom link. When you fill one in, we don't know where it's come from. So the assumption is that you've gotten a link and maybe you're using your own Zoom. But a town Zoom link needs to be reserved, similar to how a meeting space would be reserved through the selectman's office.
So before I do the agenda, I should get the Zoom link from Kelsey? Okay, all right. I will do that in the future. Um, so Justin, we were just talking like a minute before you got on. I I guess I didn't fully realize that we voted in the last full meeting to do the regular meeting hybrid. Erica's like in the town office building, as you can see. I thought both were going to be Zoom. That's why I did our meeting Zoom. But if we're gonna do in-person meetings, what do you guys all think about just being there in person for our subcommittee meeting then to just be consistent? Or does anyone have a problem with being there and needs to get to it by Zoom?
So I'll just say like my issue today is I wouldn't have made a work meeting to jump onto this.
Oh.
Just to, for information purposes, Peter, you warned this as a hybrid meeting. It says hybrid meeting in person in the town office building or via Zoom.
Oh.
That's what your agenda. I don't know where the information you started with came from, but so that's why I'm here. I mean, I need to be here because it's warned this way.
Otherwise, you would have zoomed.
Well, I often just zoom for my office. I'm just down the hall.
Oh, okay, okay. Well.
Usually it's building either way, just in my office or in this room.
I guess I'm.
If you want to meander over here, you can come to the next meeting in person.
I would have, but I thought I had to do this meeting by hybrid because the main meeting was hybrid. I I mean Zoom. So Justin, the next time we do this, at the next regular meeting of our regular meeting, would you prefer Zoom or would you just prefer we we just all do it all in person, both meetings?
I'm okay doing either. I'll just have to make sure I can make arrangements with work.
No.
I'll try to do my work meetings either on the way, or maybe I'll go to the town office early if I had to.
Okay, well, it sounds like it's a burden for you. As I'm not trying, I don't want to do that.
No, no.
It depends on the day, right?
Yes, it's like somebody that set up a meeting for me from four to five o'clock today, and then it ran over a half an hour and they were still going when I hung up on them.
Okay.
Peter, why don't we continue hybrid? So if someone can make it in person, that the idea is that we try to be in person.
Okay. All right. I was just trying to make it easier, but I guess I didn't succeed. All right.
It gives you options. If you, let's say you find you're traveling or stuck at work yourself, you could still participate in the meeting, can still continue.
Okay, okay, I got. And and that's what the state said. We have, we can do hybrid moving forward, Erica.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. All right. Well, let's let's go to our agenda item, which is financial data. What I like to do is what I want to do last time, which is do the screen share. So let me do that. And I want to put up a worksheet that I prepared for this discussion. So I've never done this before.
The bottom, there's a green button that says screen share.
Yep, I'm doing that.
Does it say?
And then I want to get go to my file of this, so. Where would I do that? Share sound files must be up here. These aren't my files. All these are somebody else's.
Peter, it's it's easier if you open the application.
Um, if you have the document open and then when you, if you hit screen share,
Uh huh.
you just should be able to choose that document.
Oh, okay, let me try that. Let me uh go to the document itself. Okay. Can you guys see that?
No.
No.
When you click screen share, does it give you a new, it should pop up a new screen, a completely new screen?
I'll try it again.
You have open.
Yep, I I click screen share and it gives me a screen, launch meeting, chat, whiteboard. There's a button that says share.
Yeah, but you need to pick the screen. Do you have, if you have the document open, you should see the document in one of those boxes.
Oh. Right.
Any of the items you have open on here, are you using a computer or a cell phone?
A laptop.
It should be one of the items you have on your laptop.
Launch meeting, whiteboard, iPhone, pad, screen.
That's what you got when you click share.
I didn't click share yet.
Click it.
Okay.
Now you're screen sharing, find your document.
And we're screen sharing.
Okay, now I got, now I how do I?
You've got a Zoom Pro there with you, so she definitely can help you out.
Yeah, that is helping me.
At the top, is it one of the, I mean, do you have the document already open?
Yeah.
Can you get back to your desktop? Maybe. My system is desktop. Now, now find the document and click it open.
Okay. Sorry about this, you guys, hang on. Where can I get? To my these screens are hiding my toolbar.
You can slide it over or minimize it.
Okay, oh, thank you. Give me Google Drive. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Oh, great. How do I get rid of this, these people? All right. So um what I did, I started to talk about this. It's annoying. Oh, there we go. What I did was I went, I talked about this last time, but it was so confusing with all the agendas. I never really got into this, but this is just a simple worksheet I created. Going to the Board of Education website, where all the budgets are stored for the for the K eight budget. And it was, it was very helpful because it's not like the regular budget you would see, you know, that the Board of Finance does. It's very complicated and has all these line items. This just has big hunks of the budget by category. And that's what you see all the way on the left. So and this is, by the way, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. So it's not as current as the current budget Erica and the town works with. But I think it's good for our purposes. Because what I'm trying to figure out here is what our per pupil cost is now, which is easy, and then what it could be if we go from two schools to one school, which I think is the one thing everybody agrees on. Everyone seems to like that on our committee. Everyone seems to like it on the Board of Ed. I think the townspeople are generally receptive to that idea. So what I did was I took from the public website for the Board of Ed, the first column, column C, and just transcribed all the hunks of our two building budget, which in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty equaled eight million, six hundred eighty-nine, zero nine five at the very bottom. Does that make sense to everyone so far? Hello? Hello?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Is that, does everyone understand what I'm I'm saying so far? So if you go to my pink bar at the very bottom that I'm scrolling down to now, you'll see that our cost per student current to school operation is twenty-one thousand, seven twenty-two. So then I said to myself, okay, what logical things could happen if we went to one school? And you'll see, and I think Erica, you'll recognize this the most because you're very familiar with all of this from your Board of Ed and town involvement. I didn't change very much. I assumed, and by the way, the second column, column D, that shows the percentages each of these categories or program areas make up of the current budget. And obviously, most of it is staffing. So I didn't truly change any of that. The only change I made, and it's in the very top row, for CES Elementary School Education, is anything associated with the office cost, I remove that. That's the eleven percent change I'm showing. And the savings all the way to the right. It's only an eleven percent change out of the sense, the CES or Center School cur, you know, budget from that year. It's not even now, but two years ago. But aside from that, if I scroll down, I made, and I'll, I want your input here as a committee, I made some, what I thought was some rational reductions. Transportation, I figured, well, if we're going from two schools to one, that we would need half as much transportation. That could or could not be true. But I thought it was a good starting point. I did the same with health services, thinking one school to two. It could be half. I did the same with utilities, half. And then operations maintenance, half reduction. So if I do all of that, I want to see where I came out. And that netted in 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 the in the savings column, seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars and change, which lowers our per pupil cost with just these few changes from twenty-one thousand, seven twenty-two to nineteen thousand, nine forty-three. Or as my green bar shows, an eight percent change you know, in the per pupil cost. So I did that recognizing I didn't touch any of the big areas of the budget, because what do I know about them? I'm not, I'm not a superintendent or a principal. So whole school budget, if you look at category two, I carried over one hundred percent. And I kind of rolled, if you will, center school into it with that one small change, assuming we would not have a principal and staff for that building if it didn't exist anymore and we were in one building. I didn't change what special education and related services at all. I reduced transportation by fifty percent. I reduced healthcare services by fifty percent. I didn't change curriculum, staff development at all. Utilities, I assume would go down fifty percent. Operations maintenance, I assume would go down fifty percent. System-wide support, whatever that is. Excuse me. Turn off my phone. I didn't change this big, big category of fringe benefits and substitutes. I didn't change. Essentially, everything's unchanged. But I was kind of pleased that I was able to get below the twenty thousand dollars per student. But recognize that there may be opportunities in these other areas that we would want to investigate further. So reactions?
So I I'm going to share a couple of things.
Thank you, Erica.
So number one, two schools to one school, a pre-K through eight school is the charge of the committee. So it's not that the committee feels it's most favorable or likes the idea. That is simply our charge. So and and the other is, while I appreciate that you've drawn some conclusions, the superintendent had already shared with us, which I shared along, that he thought there could be a six hundred to seven hundred thousand dollar savings. We have no idea where those areas would come from for a multitude of reasons. He said he won't go into specifics. And so what I don't want anyone watching this meeting or seeing it thinking is that this committee or the school building committee has any say in any of these reductions or not proposing them. This is the work of the of the Board of Education, not the school building committee or the finance subcommittee. So what it shows is the the estimated reduction that the superintendent has alluded to would would gain us about an eight percent change in per pupil. So I I think that's important to note. But I don't know that there's any other work for us to do with this. This is not the work, in my opinion, of the school building committee.
Okay, I, what I take from that, Erica, is that I'm in the, I'm in the ballpark with this with with a number that's similar to what the superintendent discussed. I looked through my notes from the previous administration when Dave Harding was superintendent. And he was in in the eight hundred thousand dollar range based on whatever was happening in that period of time in our school system. So I, I was below him and slightly above Phil. But I think it's reasonable to ask. I agree with you, and that's why you see I did not really go into any areas outside things like transportation, utilities, operations, maintenance. I I think those are must be common areas for any school project that if you're going from two schools to one, someone could reasonably expect to change. But I guess what I want to ask then is, and I think this is important, and I think it's a worthwhile discussion for us to have as a subcommittee, does an eight percent change in per pupil cost move the needle in terms of a basis for this project? It doesn't seem that consequential to me. I uh pardon?
Nothing has his hand up.
Oh, I'm, you know, my, because I have my spreadsheet open. I can't see anybody. Let me see if I can move my thing back up. Oh, there we go. Thank you. Hey, Justin. Go ahead. Oh, he's muted somehow, Erica.
Hang on, Justin. Let's see what's happening here.
Oh, can I unmute him? No, I can't.
Try now, Justin.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Not sure what happened there.
I, you know, I get what you're doing here, Peter, but I kind of agree with Erica. This doesn't really have anything to do with our job as a school building committee. And we're not here to debate whether the school, we're wasting our time or not. We're not trying to look at these costs. We're here to decide how to fix this.
Well, yes.
I shouldn't say fix this. We have a
What I'm asking is, I I'm not saying we should decide what the per pupil cost is. What I'm asking is, can we have a better number for our committee that would help a project move forward, whether it's a new school or a renovated school? Just looking at this small exercise on my part, I don't see that happening here. So what I would like our committee to do is take this further in discussion with Scott and Phil and say, well, what's reasonable to expect if we go from two schools to one? We can't, we can't just say we're going to ignore it because we're not the Board of Ed. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that. What I'm, what I'm suggesting is what are our opportunities as a subcommittee to present a project to the town? We don't know yet whether that's renovation or new, where our per pupil cost could go down and be favorable to our project and favorable to the town. Do you understand what I'm saying? Erica, go ahead.
If I can, you know, I think the per pupil expenditure is just one aspect of this project. We have two aging schools in need of serious repair, and we have a declining enrollment. It is not fiscally responsible for us to continue to, in my opinion, to educate those children in one, in two buildings. So I think that's how we got here. Our goal as a committee is to present a plan to the public of one pre-K through eight school. So I I think while this is great, I don't know that in a, in any meeting Phil is going to say anything other than we can estimate about an X, X amount of cost. We certainly can ask that in the larger committee meeting. I brought to you the information that I received from the superintendent that gave us a number. I just, I always
Is that in our Google? When you say you brought that, but when did you do that, Erica?
I shared it in our last meeting.
You did?
I did. It was a very brief meeting, but but I I've shared that, that Phil, you know, expressed that there, there's just a number, a round figure about that he would share and that we wouldn't go into specifics. I'm always nervous. When when our staff start seeing me, you're, you know, we start putting out as a committee, a document that presents, you know, if you could scroll up, you know, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar change in center school. Let's be realistic, that's going to make staff nervous, wonder who's in that hundred and seventy-eight thousand that we're proposing. We're, I'm not proposing any cuts to staff, to services, to transportation. That is not my role on the school building committee. I think it's important that we look at that. And so now we can take that round number and we could have done it without breaking it into these categories and see part of the plan, part of the project would get, gain us about an eight percent change in per pupil cost. Now, would we want it to be more? Sure. Who wouldn't want to spend a little bit less if we could in either a new or renovated building? We may get there. The superintendent and the Board of Ed may get to a different savings as a project develops and they're able to use the ed specs to fill in those gaps. And so I'll be pleased if once we have a project, we can, you know, see a more specific cost. And I think that will come from the Board of Ed as we move along in this. And again, while I appreciate the conversation, I'm not sure there's anything more for this committee to do other than say, this is about what it will be, just as one more piece of information in the whole puzzle as we presented to the public. And again, once we have an identified project that we're moving forward, it will begin to all of these unknowns will begin to fill in. We'll start to see the Board of Education give us much more specifics. So maybe in our mind, we think we need to reduce one office staff. Maybe it's more than that. Maybe it's less than that. Maybe we make an assumption, but I just think it's dangerous for us to wade into waters that we're not making decisions on and put false information out into the public.
I'm, I'm not, I'm going to respond to that because I, I just don't like the idea of doing nothing. We're, you know, we're, we're continuously waiting for the ed specs, which never seem to materialize from the Board of Ed. I don't know when that's going to be. I, I, I think the fact that we know we're going from two schools to one means we can make some reasonable assumptions. And given, and I would like some feedback here from you too, Justin. Given the fact that our enrollment is going down, as Erica just said, we don't have a space shortage. We need some viable reasons for a new school project, and it can't just be that we want a new school. And cost per pupil is a strong factor to consider. And one has to believe going from two schools to one, that there will be savings achieved there. So, okay, if you want to take out what, what the one logical assumption I made, that we would not have two central offices, but that we would have one for a new school, you can. But what's wrong with discussing these non-staff-related areas, like, for example, operations maintenance? Why can't we have a conversation with Scott Pelman and say, is it reasonable to conclude that for operations maintenance, we would go from three hundred and two thousand to one fifty-one? I just picked that number. I don't know if I'm right or wrong, but I can't believe that we can't have a discussion about that with Scott in a generic new or renovated forty thousand square foot building. And see if we can move the needle on this eight percent to make our project more favorable. And does that seem like an unreasonable approach to anyone?
I mean, for me, Peter, like the other part of this is you look at the long-term SIP that needs to happen to our schools and look at the cost that we're going to incur there. You know, not just the roofs. There's multiple things that need to happen to our schools over a long-term period. You know, that we're, as a town and a taxpayer, are going to incur beyond the per pupil cost. I'm not saying that. I mean, for me to dive in right now, beyond what you've already done and what Phil has said and what the previous superintendent said, I don't know how much more we're going to gain. I mean,
Well, I'm sorry, continue. I want, I want, interested in what you have to say.
I I don't think we're talking numbers that are going to be like, we're not going to get from eight percent to twenty-five percent. You know, I I just don't know how much value at this point in time we're going to get until we start coming up with a plan for either renovated or a new school.
Well, okay, so don't, but don't you think, for example, that whether it's new or renovated, that there's going to be a dramatic difference between our, as you just described, our current aging buildings? They require a lot of CIP money. They require a lot of maintenance money. Wouldn't it be useful for us to discuss what that savings would be in a new or renovated building versus what we have now? It may, maybe it's more than what I say, or maybe it's less.
I I agree with those. I I think if you wanted to look at something to, we could look at the overall SIP program or and see what the money is currently in there over the long term or what we need to invest in our schools that depending on what happens with those schools and whatever the plans are, still might be a burden on the town and the taxpayers, or how do we go away from those?
But and I also, you know.
Erica, hold on. I just want to follow up on what Justin just said. I think he just made a really good point and why this discussion is useful and why we shouldn't just wait until we have more plans in front of us. In addition to the say, operation savings of a new building or a renovated building over the two existing buildings that we have, you just made a great point, Justin. We have a full schedule of CIP projects for those old buildings that just escalate, right? So all those costs can be figured into a potential savings as well. Now, they're not part of the K eight budget. That's a separate budget in CIP. I get that, you know, but there has to be a but there has to be a correlation, you know, and something positive we can present to the town.
I think the reality, Peter, is that the cost of those projects that are in CIP, and this is why CIP took the avenue that it did. If there's a new or renovated project, a project, a school project, those costs of all those CIP projects is replaced with a potential bond payment. So there may not be a savings in CIP in individual projects, but potentially replaced there. I don't see, I absolutely see value in having conversations and asking Scott Pellman's advice on how he thinks maybe some of our operational costs might be adjusted. When Justin and I were on the same tour at Birch Grove, we asked them questions about savings in some of their utilities. And Justin, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought some of what was shared with us is you might not see an initial savings, it's going to be down the road because there may have been a need for expense in equipment in the beginning and in, excuse me, in order to see that savings down the road.
So that was my take from it. It wasn't necessarily the upfront cost, but the overall utility costs are significantly less than the current school they had before the new school.
You know, I still think, Peter, I'm not sure that.
Can I just respond to Justin first? Erica, hang on, hang on, Erica, hold that thought. I just want to, Justin, when they said significantly less, did they give you an idea like 50%, 20%, 80%?
Yes, he told me his utility costs are probably down 30%.
Okay, so that could mean I'm high here and taking out 50%.
Possibly. I mean, I'm hesitant to look, you know, I don't know what our utility bills are compared to what they could be. I'm not good with that, but just the fact that when he told me their school was partially air conditioned and now they've gone to a fully air conditioned school and the utilities have still gone down 30%, I thought that was significant.
Granted, is that a bigger, is that a big building, Justin? How many square feet is it?
I don't remember, but from what Phil said, it was going to be bigger than what we needed.
Okay, okay, that's helpful for perspective.
The state was about 82,000 square feet, I think somewhere in that ballpark.
Say that again, Erica?
I think it was somewhere in about the 82,000 square foot.
Oh, so that's like almost double what we would have. Wow.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
Oh, we're 60. I'm sorry, we're 60. We're 60,000. That's right.
And so a little bit more. So I think there's, there's value in getting his opinion. I just, I firmly believe that we should be extremely cautious and take a step back from determining where any of these costs would come from. They're not assumptions we should be making. We can discuss them and say, listen, with multiple adjustments in budget, we know there's going to be cut somewhere. I may think there's only a need for one nurse. Maybe for whatever reason, the school determiners are still a need for two nurses. We may say there's a need for a cut here and that's not what's determined. There's a cut somewhere else. But that we agree that there could be about a $700,000 reduction in, in the operating budget with potential for more. You may see, because our building is significantly, both of our buildings are significantly older than the original Birch Grove. They're seeing a 30% reduction. We might see more because I don't think either of our buildings currently, as they said, are very energy efficient. So we could see a larger savings, but we don't know what our project is. We have no idea what kind of building we're going to be building or renovating. So these specifics are just, I just don't think that it's our lane to begin.
Oh, well, I, I think it's important for a finance subcommittee to be in the finance lane.
I explained of a new school in the operating budget of the Board of Education, Peter, that is not our task. We are looking at an overall number. You get into the specifics and I'm just, we can disagree on it.
We surely can, but that doesn't mean we can't discuss. And whether we go new or renovated, we know we're going to have a 60,000 square foot facility. So I think it's reasonable to assign utilities costs, operation costs, energy costs to that, to that building generically. I think we can do that without causing any alarm to anyone. And I don't see why that's something that we can't look at for opportunity. Transportation as well. One of the questions I think Ralph, as long as he's sitting out there muted, asked in our last full committee meeting was, do we have to have separate transportation for the lower grades and the higher grades? I get that's a Board of Ed issue, but we never got a response. Now, maybe if we got a response to that, and maybe that's coming to us, I don't know. But again, that's an area where we could possibly move the needle here. And why wouldn't that be a positive thing if we can show projected per pupil costs based on these areas that are not unique, you know, to either a renovated building or a new building. It's going to be essentially the same. Is that, do you understand what I'm saying? Go ahead, Justin.
I was gonna say, I understand what you're saying. I'm just concerned we haven't done enough and know enough yet to do this. Like we talked about, like for, I use transportation for, for an example. How do we really figure the buses and how many times they have to run? Like we talked about with Scott Pellman, the possibility of getting more money, or I forget what the word, the terms he used actually were, but if we went to a full day kindergarten, there's possibly like an extra incentive. So until we know what the plan is around those, I'm hesitant to figure out what the transportation could be or couldn't be. Because I think depending on how many kids are there, that could change the bus routes and everything.
Understood. And I guess that's all part of the Ed spec, Erica?
I'm not sure. I defer to Superintendent Stevens. I'm not sure how the transportation plays into the Ed specs. And I believe the Ed specs are just the building, but I may be wrong. We can ask that in our full meeting. Um, I've looked through several versions of other folks' Ed specs and, and Peter, I apologize, I'm just recalling the transportation piece, but, but it could be in there.
Just, just listening to the discussion, what I'm kind of concluding a little bit here is, I, I think, you know, aside from, you know, specific details like kindergarten, and I, I understand what you're saying, Justin, that probably be important. And not knowing the site of save, if we go the dual route would change the distances and all of that, and that can have varying too. But, but generically, I, I think we could come up with a, a transportation cost, a operations cost, a utilities cost for a 60,000 square foot building. Then I'm thinking, and I think I've done this in a very benign way, Erica, but I respect your concerns. We could ask the superintendent and Mr. Pellman to collapse all these other areas even further. And like you're saying, Erica, just give us a generic number based on what you know of the Ed specs. Maybe the full committee will get them soon. If there's any opportunities you see, because I recall in the full meeting, Scott saying that he and Phil have a working knowledge that they're using of the Ed specs as they're working up both scenarios, renovated and new. So, okay, let's work on our known areas as a subcommittee and then add to it any potential savings they see in a 60,000 square foot building, either new or renovated. Generically, like you're saying, Erica, and then maybe it gets better than, I would like it to be better than eight percent so that we have something positive as a basis for a project. Since we don't have enrollment, we don't have space needs. We, we have a lot of drivers that are helping us arrive at where we want to be. Does that make sense to anyone?
It does. We definitely have enrollment, Peter. We have an enrollment study that gives us enrollment projections. We have enrollment. That's not something we're so.
I know we have it, but it doesn't make a case for, for a new or renovated building because our enrollment's flat or going down.
In your opinion, so.
Other opinion is there?
So you're, you're looking, you're looking for another, what I'm hearing, Peter, is that you're looking for a per pupil cost that's going to give a reason why we need a new school. And a one, a one school, a renovated project or a new school. And again, I'll say the charge of this committee is to formulate a project to the town that is a pre K through eight school. That is our very charge and which we need to work at. And again, we can look at this general number, but it is in still, we disagree. It is not the work of the school building committee or the finance subcommittee to determine what the transportation costs are going to be in the new school. We can speak to that and that superintendent and the Board of Ed can speak to us on that. But it is not our role to determine if we're going to have $150,000 in operation reductions or what the transportation reductions. As we have a project, those things are going to come out and they're going to be part of the discussion. But we don't even have a project yet. We haven't narrowed down to a renovation or a new build. So I'm not sure how else we're expected to get these numbers at any other way. And again, I still say this is not the work of this committee.
Well, we're a subcommittee. If I could just.
It's not a work of it.
And the subcommittee's purpose is to look at financial data that would support either project. I, I don't think that's an unreasonable task. And I don't agree that we have to wait until we have a completely defined project. Helping us define that project would be, what if we find out, you know, that we have favorable numbers in this particular area per pupil cost that would support either project? What would be wrong with that? That would be helpful. I'll take the no response as a.
I know what you're asking a question, Peter.
Yeah, I'm asking.
Using a specified project, either way, that's not what, what you know. Listen, I think our subcommittee should be looking at the finances of the school building project. This is just one tool you want to use for analysis, but.
I, I'm trying to understand how our costs would be reduced in areas, whether it's a new, I know we're waiting to determine that which project we want to have, but I think a lot of these categories apply to either project. And I would like to look at that as a finance subcommittee. I think that's a reasonable thing for us to do that would help the overall project regardless of which direction we go in.
I'll just say the same thing. I just think we're too early to look at these numbers. I, you know, with changes in Ed specs and not knowing what's going to happen where I personally, if we were going to invest time in something, I'd like to see what's in the SIP for the overall renovations of the school that need to happen to just keep up with what we have that we wouldn't be spending money on.
The, the CIP projects that, that we had previously that are now, are they on hold, Erica?
Not, I'm not talking just the roof. I'm just, you know, there's.
Yeah, the CIP plan that was approved at town meeting put on hold all of the projects that had been proposed by the Board of Education. And the superintendent had already shared with that committee that there are, there have not been new projects added because we are in this process of a new school. So the only things he's asked for new are things that absolutely needed to be done. And so the CIP committee took the opportunity to say, with the direction this committee has got, the larger committee has gone in knowing that there's anticipation of a project being taken to the town in a potential referendum in the next fiscal year, that the plan in year two allows for the beginning of a bond. Whether that bond is for school renovation of one school, one to one school or a new school on a new site is yet to be determined. But that took the place of all those projects. So on the larger spreadsheet that we have, those projects are still outlined, but they are not funded in the current five-year plan.
Well, we have them on the larger spreadsheet and we could, we could total them up as Justin is suggesting, right?
That is correct. Although I will, even CIP was aware the, the numbers we had were older quotes. Many of them have not been updated.
I understood that they're just budget numbers and then especially in today's climate, they could change. Okay, I see our time is kind of expiring soon. So I want to close the discussion on per pupil cost at this time. I want to have it on the next agenda again. I'm gonna just take all your feedback into consideration and revisit it on our next, our next meeting. I'd like to add to next week's agenda, if you guys agree, what Justin's suggesting, that we look at all the projects that are on the books, so to speak, for our two old buildings in, in the event that we wound up in that scenario, that might, I think Phil said he was going to tabulate that in our last full meeting. Maybe he has, and I can get that from him before our next subcommittee meeting. And, and then Erica, I think your suggestion is a good one too for our next meeting. I think we have in our Google Drive folder, the bond schedule that we had previously from the Board of Ed for this project, that that was kind of a preliminary, what it could be. Am I correct?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that, Peter.
I, well, I believe we do. So I'll add that to the agenda for our next meeting. So we can take a look at that as well because I'm glad you brought that up, Erica, that if the projects Justin talks about go away and the bond kicks in in year two, if the town approves either one of our potential projects, then it would be good for us to start getting a handle on what that represents. Makes sense?
Sure. What, what are you proposing? Do we say we would meet once a month?
Um, I.
I'm not available on the 18th, so I'll just state that.
And that's our next full meeting?
Correct.
Okay, um, what, what's our, what's, what's our quorum requirements?
I don't know that there are, but you would have to be able to, you know, host your own meeting, but I cannot be available on the 18th.
Justin, can you be?
Let me just double check quickly.
Sure.
I think yes, because I think the last SBC meeting, we said that everybody that hadn't already said no had to be there, otherwise we couldn't have a quorum. I think I can do it.
Okay, then, then we'll, we'll dig into that, Erica, and you can get a break from us. I'm sure you have plenty of other town meetings to deal with and, and we'll, I'll get those three items on the agenda and I'll try and figure out how to do. I would have to get from Kelsey the link and then be the host. Is that what I would do?
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds good. Anybody else have any other issues for our committee before we head over to the main meeting?
I'm good.
I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
A second.
So moved. See you guys at the main meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erica. Thanks, Justin.